If we can call this meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Selectman McCarthy-Weighy to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And today we ask you if you could remain standing just to observe for a moment, a moment of silence in recognition of the victims in Colorado, the victims of the shooting. Thank you.
And then Kristin, did you have something to add on to that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. First Selectman. In an effort to just reach out to the community in Aurora and to those who have been victimized, we as a community would like to do something to help our community, send our thoughts and best wishes to all of them. I've contacted the Young Artist Studio, which is some folks in town who are willing to help us to create something that will allow us to send our thoughts. We are working on a date, hopefully a weekend in August, that we can have people come and write their thoughts on some flags that will be put together in a banner to send out to Aurora. So look for more information on that and we'll keep you abreast of it.
All right, thank you. Looking out, I don't see how wins these pet in our presence, so we're going to move on from that one. First item up then would be to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of July 5th. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any comments?
Now for once, I do not.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up, to hear and consider the minutes for the Special Board of Selectment meeting July 11th, 2012. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. First Selectman, I have one question on the bottom of page two, and I'm not sure if I'm reading it wrong or just remembering it wrong. It was when I was asking Mrs. Merrilyes about the maximum number of sick days that could accrue, and the first answer was 80, and then the second answer was 120 days. So what I don't recall or see here is which was the correct answer. And I thought they had said it was 120 days, and then they came back and corrected it and corrected it and said it was 80 days in reverse order of this, but maybe I have that wrong. So it's not really a, it may not be a correction, and it might just need to be a clarification on what the answer to the question was and in what order the numbers were given to us.
I think from a function of the correction, correct minutes, I think there were two numbers given.
Yes, there were.
So technically, the minutes might be correct, even though the first number was...
They might be. It might just be needing to be clarified.
And then Jen, if you can take an action item down to get back to this board with what the correct answer is, just so we know.
Yeah. I seem to remember the first answer being 120, and then the corrected answer being 80 in reverse order of this, but I could be wrong.
It seems that we've got kind of two choices. You could postpone these minutes till we get the correct answer and can update at that. So going forward, the record is correct, so there's no, future people don't ask which number was correct, even if the disparity was in fact an accurate reflection in the minutes. Any preference?
I would actually prefer to postpone. I don't see why you don't just...
Is that a motion?
I've moved to postpone.
Second?
A second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks. And Jen, if you'd still be good enough to get us the correct answer, get that out to us before the minutes are on that. Thank you. Next up, resignation for, from the Board of Finance. This is for information only, but Elaine Gaffney has resigned, and has created a vacancy on the Board of Finance, which we will look to fill with another elected Democrat. It has to be a Democrat based on Ms. Gaffney's party affiliation and the minority rule. We'll look at getting that done as soon as possible in that regard. Next up, from the Town Attorney, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approve the sale of the Town of Fairfield of a parcel of land which includes the driveway which presently serves 3171 Bronson Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, which sale shall be to the owner Eleanor S. Garcia-Garcia and her respective heirs assigns, I'm going to say for the sum of $18,000. The Selectmen is hereby authorized to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to effectuate said sale. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. And Mr. Lesser, can you fill us in?
Yes, good afternoon. I'm going to let Peter Ambrose do the presentation, as he represents the potential purchaser. However, before he does that, I would just ask for a slight amendment to the resolution. And I'd ask that it reads, where it has the name of the buyer, Eleanor S. Garcia-Garcia, change the word "and" immediately after that to "or," and then after the word "respective," add the word "successors." So it would read, "Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approve the sale by the Town of Fairfield of the parcel of land which includes the driveway which presently serves 3171 Bronson Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, which sale shall be to the owner Eleanor S. Garcia-Garcia or her respective successors, heirs, and assigns," et cetera.
As long as we're making a motion, did, should that be for the sum of $18,000 that I'd get lost in my reading of that?
It should be for the sum of $18,000, yes.
Okay. So we've got two motions there, one to add the word successor, one to change the word "and" to "or"?
That's correct.
And then one to add the word "for."
Yes.
And a motion to amend?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay with that? Any comments from the public on the amendment, and the amendment only? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jen, do you have those changes?
Can I ask whether the word "for" goes?
Between the word "assigns" and the word "the."
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Attorney Ambrose?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. First Selectman. Kristin and Kevin, my name is Peter Ambrose. I'm here on behalf of the prospective buyer of the property, Brennan and his wife, Jen Keating. The buyers entered into a contract to purchase the property known as 3171 Bronson Road back in January of this past year, or late January of this past year. I discovered in reviewing the title and in reviewing the land records that a encroachment existed on the northerly side of the property, and the encroachment takes into consideration the gravel driveway that's on the property and has served the house, one would think, forever. If one were to take a look, drive by the house, the only appropriate area for a driveway would be on that, at that location, and the old garage stands on that location. And this driveway has been in place for many, many years. In fact, I'd like to do two things. I know I have presented a handout to the board, and I've depicted on your handout the encroachment area in yellow. I have a larger survey map that was done several years ago, and I, let me present this to you, and...
This is just a blow-up version of what we have...
Yes, it is. But I think you can get a better idea as to the fact, the location of the gravel driveway, and the fact that it's, is on the northerly side of the property, and is the only access to the garage and to the house. There is, on the left side of the property, a long white fence that stretches down Bronson Road. So that in negotiating for the sale of the property, we had reached a price to purchase the property. The property is presently underwater and is owned by Mrs. Garcia-Garcia. In fact, she applied, her attorney applied, her attorney, his attorney, Brian Fatsy, he applied for a short sale of the property, and was able to obtain a short sale to effectively sell it to my client. And I pointed out to Attorney Fatsy that this encroachment existed, and we could not buy the property because of this defect in title. I also pointed out to him that we had paid a fair consideration for the property in making our offer. The house is not in the best of shape, and repairs will have to be done to it. But I stated that, he stated to me that he had been in touch with the town regarding the possible acquisition of this parcel. I reached out to Attorney Stanton Lesser and discussed this matter with him, and advised him that this encroachment area had been in existence for, it would appear, for an extremely lengthy period of time. In fact, if I may, I'd like to present to the board...
Thank you.
What I've presented to the board is copies of a contour map that goes back to 1968, which shows the house in yellow and shows the encroachment area, the driveway area. And the whole point of this is to reflect the fact that this driveway was in existence, at least since 1968, and has probably been there from its very inception. In discussing the math, this matter with Attorney Stanton Lesser, I informed him that I felt there was a legitimate encroachment on the property which inhibited our ability to buy the property and inhibited the owner's ability to sell the property. The owner is without any funds and can't kick any money in towards the acquisition of the property. A price was provided to us, or offered to us, as a prospective price to purchase the property of $24,000, and I went back and forth, and we counter-offered at the sum of $18,000 on the basis that we're trying to clear up what would otherwise be a title problem, and we always assumed that the driveway belonged to us from the very time that we, my clients looked at the house. Well, we do have approval for short sale. It had been extended now to August 31st. We just discovered a short time ago that the next RTM meeting won't be until, I think, September 24th. So, I mean, we will have to get Attorney Cantor to extend the date of the short sale that, so hopefully we can put this together. And further, I have engaged a surveyor to prepare an A2 survey to reflect the actual layout of that easement area. Now, you see the designated area in yellow, takes into consideration the existing paved driveway, but also extends a few more feet to an actual fence that's on the property and has been standing on the property for many years. So we would like to acquire not only up to the driveway itself, but also a couple of feet past that to where the fence is shown on that survey. And my client, my clients, the Keatings, are willing to in fact pay to get this encroachment issue resolved, and they're willing to pay the sum of $18,000 to do that. Now, the Town of Fairfield has owned this property for a long period of time, and in my presentation that I had made to the Board of Selectmen, I do point out that the offer being made was arrived at prorating the assessment with the land value of the existing land in question. The sale itself will remove an existing encroachment from the town property and will allow the owner unrestricted access, or a owner unrestricted access. And the reason the charge was prepared the way it is is because the present owner who holds title, we would expect to have her assign her rights over to us so that we could acquire the property when we in fact do the, perform the closing. The town property to which the driveway area is affixed is a triangle of unoccupied land between roadways. It has no significant value. It cannot be developed. I don't believe there is any significant impact to the Town of Fairfield in releasing that encroachment area, and I think it will most certainly eliminate a hardship for not only the homeowner who is underwater and trying to get out of the problem that they have, but it will also eliminate the title problem and allow my clients to buy the property and to restore, well, it's in a historic district. And if you go buy the property, it really doesn't look very hot right now. But my clients are a young couple, former Fairfield residents. They want to move back to Fairfield. They live in New York, and their inclination would be to enhance the property and to restore it and do, according to the historic guideline districts. So I would request that you take this matter into consideration.
All right. Thank you. Lesser, anything more to add?
I do have just two comments to make if I might. Peter, I think just, he may have misstated something. We originally asked for $24,000. They did not offer $18,000. They offered considerably less, and what we did was we agreed on the value of $18,000. Part of that is based on the fact that this is a piece of land that's really of no value to anybody but this property owner, so you would take a bit of a discount for that. I would also ask that if you decide to grant this, if you approve this, that you attach as a condition, Peter already said that they're going to get a survey, but I would ask that you make that a condition, that they do get an A2 survey which delineates the property. We did have discussions, I did have discussions with Attorney Fatsy, and he indicated to me that inasmuch as it was a short sale, his client had no money, and he didn't think he could get the bank to kick in any money, and the best solution we felt was to put this property on the tax rolls, the town gets the money for it. It's a property piece that they've been using forever anyway, so I think it suits everybody. Thank you. If you have any questions...
Any questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. So, thank you, Mr. Ambrose and Mr. Lesser. In terms of this document that you distributed from April of 1968, the source of this document is, I somehow missed that. What is the source of that?
Yeah, I think it states on, we got it from the Town Hall. It's a copy of the Contour Engineering Map, a drawing that we got here at the, at the Town. It could be from the assessor's office.
Or engineering, maybe.
Or engineering. I know Bob, Mike, my associate spent quite a bit of time at the engineering office, and they may very well have gotten it, but that's where it, I believe, came from.
So this is, this is kind of the longest record of knowing that the driveway was at least in use since 1968.
Yeah, I wasn't able to find any other document which goes back far to that time, but I think at least since 1968. There's evidence of that being the only accessway to the, to the house and to the garage that was there.
Thank you.
Just one other thing. Obviously, if this deal doesn't go through, his client is not going to buy this piece, only if the short sale goes through, which we expect it to, then they'll be buying it.
Another question, the adjacent piece of land. What is the size of that piece of land, the property, the triangle property that's between the two?
The piece of land is a pretty good-sized piece, except that the road bisects it. I don't think I have it. There were some aerial photos. Actually, if you go on the GIS system, you'll see it, and I looked at it with Joe Devanschuk, and the piece is useless because the road runs diagonally across it, so, although the whole piece is decent size, it's not useful for anything because of the road.
Mr. Powell?
Couple things, please. Thank you, sir. This map from 1968 is helpful. Do you know if the property has changed hands since 1968?
Yes, it did.
It has?
It has, yes.
Okay.
So I believe the present owners purchased the property in 2001.
2001, okay. So my next question would be, there should have been a title search done at that time that should have discovered what you have now discovered. So I guess my question is, who could be, who should be liable for that? Who made a mistake? The title search company?
Someone obviously did not pick up the, this problem. A bank, a bank issued a mortgage, a substantial mortgage on the property at that time. And so usually, in a situation like this, one would have to present a title insurance company with a survey affidavit, or some proof that there were no encroachments. So there had, I did not represent...
Right.
...the buyer at that time. But there is title insurance for this property, but it may not, it may not, even though they signed an affidavit to the effect that they weren't aware of a title problem with a survey, I'm sure had they seen, had the title company seen a survey of the property at that time, it probably would have had a problem. Now, the issue is what access, I mean, the owner of the property now is without funds. It's broke. And I, I would now want a conjecture as to their ability to go back now after this period of time against either a lawyer who may have overlooked something, or a title company to try to redress this issue.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly sensitive to their situation. I just kind of wonder, it kind of jumps off the page.
Something that should have been picked up.
Absolutely. So I'm just wondering who might have missed it in the past. All right, so you've answered that. My other question is the methodology to come up with the $18,000. It sounds like more of a negotiation than it does a formal scientific assessment. Can you just walk me through that?
I did a takeoff of, from the map, and I determined, I think it was about 2,000 square feet. I took the assessed value of the lot and figured what the percentage was based on the assessed value of the lot, and I came up with a figure of approximately $24,000. That's where I got it. And there's no market for this piece, so, you know, there's no comparables or things you can do. And that was what we used as a starting point, and then Peter came back with another number, and we compromised.
So there wasn't an assessor involved, nor was there an appraisal involved?
No. I think an appraisal, under these circumstances, quite frankly, I think they'd probably just go back and see what the assessment was.
And I ask that not to necessarily question the math. It could be right, it could be wrong. That I don't know, but I wonder if maybe, are we setting any kind of precedent here by calculating it this way for somebody to come back to us down the road on something similar or even dissimilar and say, you know, this is how you guys did this before on straight math. It may or may not apply the next time. So I'm just kind of curious as to, you know, is this methodology going to be looked at as accepted by somebody else down the road, or could that be a problem for us?
I think that, I think you have to take these on a case-by-case basis, and you have to look at the circumstances. I think if you had something such as a building lot where you could really determine a value for it, but where you have something with just a little tiny piece of property, it's basically what someone's willing to pay, that's the value. They're willing to pay $18,000 for it, so that would probably be the fair market value. I don't think we're setting a precedent here. I think you really have to look case by case, and I think that's the way we did it here. It probably would be fine.
If I may, just for the record, I am. The square footage of the property does not, I based the total land value of the property, the total acreage of the property is 1.386 acres, and in fact, comes out to around 60,374 square feet, the land value of the property. And this property in question is 120 feet in length, because it extends all the way from the back to the front, so it's 120 feet by 30 feet in size, and that encompasses...
Like an eighth of an acre.
Yeah, that encompasses the, where the actual fence is, the white fence is now that goes down. So it's a little over the driveway. And I think more so considerations that were taken into consideration and making this offer, and coming to this offer had to do not only with the fact that we're dealing with acreage, but also the fact that there's been a encroachment title issue that's been going on for over 60 years.
Anyway.
And, you know, so in fairness, I mean, there's some quid pro quo in that way of calculating it. It's not just a straight acquisition of a, of a property that's not, that's not, as I said, we can't get titled against a town by adverse possession. You can't do that. But it does seem like a logical way of resolving a title problem with, that affects the homeowner.
Thank you, sir.
Just to clarify, I believe, so I'm clear, this was approximately, you said 2,000 square feet?
That was my calculation, but I think Peter's was, he went over a little bit farther than I did doing a takeoff. So he came up with more than 3,000.
I have approximately 30 feet by 120 feet.
About 3,000 square feet.
That's what I have.
So just, just under a tenth?
About 3,600 square feet.
All right, just under a tenth of an acre.
Yeah.
Maybe a 1/10.
Yeah, okay.
It's 43,000 square feet.
43,560, yeah.
One of those useless facts that gets us both points on jeopardy.
[laughing]
And then, just to fill in the other piece, we did ask about title insurance, that type of thing. If the owner did have knowledge back when they bought the property of this encroachment, would that change anything?
It might, but I just, you know, I can't, I really can't conjecture as to, I did not represent the owner at that time, and...
Not asking for inside information, just asking about the law in terms of, is there anything that...
Which owner are you talking about? The seller at the time?
If the current owner or the seller of the property in fact knew about this when they were buying the property themselves back in 2001, does that change any of what you've presented to us so far?
I'm not sure. I mean, I think, I think the buyer should have realized that there was an encroachment problem back then.
But if they did or didn't, it doesn't change where we are. I'm just trying to make sure that's not a consideration...
Not after this length of time.
Or not an issue.
You know, the interesting thing is that the fence that Peter talked about, and we all know that people go, oh yeah, that's, that's my boundary line, right? People think when they're going to look at it and the seller says, yeah, my property goes to the fence, sometimes they're not right. So that may have been what happened here.
Oftentimes, yeah.
Okay. Just, and the property that the town is potentially selling with this transaction, that is currently open space?
I don't believe it's, it's owned by the Town of Fairfield. It may be open space. It's certainly not being used for any purpose at that time. It abuts the church parsonage that, that's behind it.
Okay. Where my question's going is if in fact it's open space, do we have to go before the Conservation Commission or any other board to get their permission to part with it?
I don't think it's open space, but I would have to check and see if they have jurisdiction to sell.
If it's not open space, it would be...
I think it's just a piece that the town's had for a long time.
Does anybody maintain it in any manner, any grass cutting, any...
It looks as though it's maintained by the town. I mean, it is...
The town probably does.
Yeah. It looks as though it's maintained.
Kind of all natural, or do we mow it?
I, I couldn't tell.
It's possible the church poses a...
Yeah. It is possible the church maintains it because it, it's adjacent to the church property.
Good point. Mr. White, since you're here, would you have any knowledge of whether DPW or Conservation does any maintenance on this parcel that we're talking about, or a slice of a parcel?
Do you know which piece we're talking about? I don't know. I probably haven't even...
It's this parcel, Brown Zero. Having heat off the ground, that's...
Yeah.
It's a lot of fire.
Right up here. Pieces like this. Right. On that specific property. As far as the north, it's something that it holds.
Okay.
It's possible that Conservation would have that answer as well, so...
Yeah.
I don't believe any of this area is affected by Conservation, at least not, or wetlands.
Right, but it, I guess my concern would be if it's, if it's open space... Right, but it, I guess my concern would be if it's, if it's open space, understanding, I'm going to call it the Conservation Commission manages or open space, do they have any approval in the steps in the process for the town divesting itself with this piece of land?
They may. I don't know because I would have to check to see if they do. The town code says that the town can sell property, it doesn't talk about open space. It just says that the town, the Board of Selectment, TPZ, RTM, that's the process you go through. Doesn't say what property, just says town property, so.
If they-
I don't know if there's some statute on that.
If they did, obviously we'd have to comply with that condition.
Okay. And then if you could just relate the approval steps, if it's approved by this board, what happens from here?
My understanding is that it would go before the RTM for its review and approval. And I believe, and that would, would not occur until September the 24th, I think, is the next RTM meeting.
It goes to TPZ first.
Yeah, I seem to remember from the Martell's experience when we were looking at the Pentway sale, it had to go to TPZ at some point.
Stand in, today informed me that would have to probably take it before TP and Z also.
They just issue a report, they either say it's okay or not. If it's not okay, if they say no, all that means is that the RTM would have to pass it by two-thirds of them to sell it. They can't, TPZ can't stop the sale. They can just make it more difficult.
Okay. Any further questions from the board at this time? Okay, go to the public. Any comments from the public? All right, looks like we're back to the board. It seems at the very least we need to note in this resolution that it's contingent on the-
Survey.
Seller providing an A2 survey to the town. Mr. Lesser, where would we amend this, sir? Mr. Ambrose?
I think you could just add a paragraph that's like, you know, as part of the approval, the seller shall provide an A2 survey delineating the boundaries of the property.
So maybe after the $18,000?
Yeah.
Add that sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah, after $18,000, you could put a sentence in there. That the buyer shall provide a Class A2 survey delineating the bound, delineating the boundaries of the property.
I've already had that discussion with Attorney Lesser and in fact have already engaged a surveyor to prepare an A2 survey of this area if in fact this is approved.
Can I have a motion to amend the resolution with that sentence?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that?
Do you want me to read what I have?
Certainly.
I have, after $18,000, I have the buyer shall provide an A2 survey delineating the boundaries of the property. Is that good?
That's fine.
Any comments from the public on the amendment? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So the motion stands before us as amended. I guess my question is, just on the open space question, it sounds like you're both in agreement that we probably, there isn't a clause in the charter and I certainly don't remember one in my perusal of it. But rather than having this, I don't necessarily want to hold this up, but also, I guess I would ask that, and Attorney Lesser, I'm going to ask you in this case, that regardless of kind of how we, if we do pass this today, in fact, could you please check with Conservation or the current regs, just to make sure there is no other approval step from that body?
I don't do that.
If there is-
Perhaps you could just say that it's contingent on approval by Conservation if required. Your approval is contingent on approval by Conservation if required. I mean, there's no step to go through in the charter, so I don't know.
Or any land use board if required.
Yeah.
If there's someone upstairs, I'll run upstairs now and see if there's someone there.
We can just make it contingent on that, we solve that problem.
I think so.
If that's okay with this board.
That gets me closer.
All right.
Would you like to recommend a sentence?
No?
So you have to use land use board.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Contingent upon approval by any land use board if required.
I would just put, in addition to any requirements of the town code, in addition to any requirements of Fairfield Town Ordinances, if approval of Conservation is required.
Or any other land use board.
I mean, it's already, we already know you have to go to, we already know you have to go to TPZ. I would put, in addition to the requirements-
TPZ doesn't have to approve it, which is my caution again.
Right, that's why I want to say, I just want to say something about Conservation. Just put this, this approval shall be contingent upon consent of Conservation if required, the Conservation Commission if required.
Okay.
I think that should do it.
Is that okay with any thoughts on that from this board?
I guess, I think if it helps the board feel more comfortable, but I assume that as the town attorney, you will be-
Yes.
Clear and following the charter and the ordinances, so I am comfortable that you will be doing that. So I think if that helps us feel more comfortable in clarifying that, but I think that's implied in your, in your duties and in the process. I think what we're hearing today is that you're not 100% certain of the actual jurisdiction of this piece of property in terms of is Conservation currently maintaining it and caring for it? But somehow it is being cared for and it is a piece of property of the town, so I'm willing to vote in support of the motion, but I think.
Well, I have complete faith in Attorney Lesser in doing that. My thought would be that if perchance we do add that amendment, that it's clear to any future board that that point was checked. So it's not something that comes up at an RTM meeting from that standpoint.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowley, any thoughts?
I can go with that, yeah.
All right. So can I have a motion to amend it per Attorney Lesser's comments?
I didn't get the whole sentence, so if you could reiterate.
This approval shall be contingent on approval of the Fairfield Conservation Commission should same be required by statute or ordinance.
Should that approval be required?
Should be required.
Should same be required by statute or ordinance. So may I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any comments on the amendment? Any public comments on the amendment, amendment only? All right, back to the board. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With the force, is this motion as amended? I guess I should try and read that. From the top, and Jen, please correct me if I stumble at all here. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approve the sale by the town of Fairfield of the parcel of land which includes the driveway which presently serves 3171 Bronson Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, which sale shall be to the owner Eleanor S. Garcia Garcia and her respective-
Or-
Or, her respective successors, heirs, or assigns for the sum of $18,000. Buyer shall provide a Class A2 survey delineating the boundaries of this property. This approval is contingent on approval of the Conservation Commission should same be required by statute or ordinance. The first Selectman is hereby authorized to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to effectuate said sale. I have a motion to, that's what's before us, we already have a motion. Any further discussion?
Comment. I will say that, you know, I think Selectman Kylie raised some interesting points about precedent, which I think were responded to appropriately by our town attorney. I want to reiterate, I do think that it is a case-by-case basis and this is a unique situation. I think the fact that this land has been in use for this purpose and has been recognized that way by those in the neighborhood and those who have had possession of the house makes sense. And certainly, I'm happy to know that the taxpayers who will be assuming the burden will, you know, hopefully continue to improve the neighborhood and be paying taxes on this property and I intend to support this item at this point.
Mr. Crowley, any final comment?
Yeah, I'm going to vote against it, I'm just not comfortable yet and it sounds like it's going to pass, but there's a few unknowns for me still with the appraisal methodology and how we got there. So I hear what you say, but I'm just not quite there to vote yes on this.
Okay. What would it take to kind of get you there? And is that something we can provide, provide to this board so that we can be comfortable?
I think my biggest point of discomfort is the $18,000. I just don't know. Is it good, bad, indifferent? I just don't know. And since there was no appraisal involved in that process or the assessor's office wasn't involved in it, I just, I'm hard pressed to, to think it's the right number or it turned out as the right number.
What would you need provided to get you comfortable?
Well, I think at the very least, because an appraisal is an expensive endeavor for whoever has to put it out, I mean, I think if the assessor were to opine on this, that the methodology that we used made sense and was in the ballpark and there weren't any issues from his perspective, that would be good enough for me.
All right. Mr. Lesser, there's a September meeting of the town planning and zoning, is that correct?
I believe there is.
Could that get, could that be done in time for the September RTM meeting?
Yeah, and you had meetings before that too.
Then perhaps the proposal is that we postpone this to the September meeting to allow for-
Well, we could, I'm not looking to hold you up. I'm just not comfortable yet and that's kind of how I feel.
Yep, we're more than happy to get the information to get you comfortable, it doesn't hold up the process.
May I just comment, if I may?
If we could just clarify, if we get that far, what you would like the assessor to do or to get you there?
And I have no problem meeting with the assessor and discussing that with him and I'm sure subject to his standing to view also, but this is a distressed property. It's under short sale. My clients would like to buy it, but sooner or later the, the bank is going to, they've been stuck with this property for close to a year now and I would think that they are going to somehow move. So the window of opportunity for my clients to purchase this property is closing out. The date for the short sale was extended till August, August 31st. And we thought that would work, but because there's no RTM meeting in August, it's going to have to be September. So we're going to have to get another request to extend this short sale date and that's, and that's not an easy thing to do. So we're trying to be fair in making an offer that takes into consideration a price that we feel is fair and also clears up a encroachment issue that's been there for a long time. And I think in the appraise, the town appraiser taking a look at this property or in a appraisal being done of the property, I think one has to also take into consideration if there is a title issue affecting that property. So that, you know, having a, so that issue would come into play, I think, with what the fair market value of the property is.
And I would compliment both attorneys in terms of bringing this to this board on a timely basis, so it's not an 11th hour type of thing. So if we were to attempt to address Mr. Crowley's concerns, we have time to do that without holding up the process. By August 31st, which is the current deadline for your clients, nothing's going to happen by then anyway, so September 24th is the earliest that it could be approved. And I believe what we're talking about doesn't impact that.
I just want to go back to this point. The reason that I began my comments with the fact that Selectman Kylie raised a good point is I had the same issue. I actually wondered if the calculation was done and you answered this later in your commentary based on the driveway or outside the fence. But I think the reason why I'm ready to vote yes on this today is because what I heard was your valid point about the methodology on the math and why I reiterated that this is a unique situation and each one has to be looked at and I don't want to set precedent with this. But what I heard earlier in the conversation was that this is a unique situation and we may go out and get an appraisal, we may learn that perhaps the quote unquote real number is higher than the numbers that our town attorney has calculated, but we had, there was a negotiation that occurred as well. So in the negotiation process, there was a number that was reached and so my, as I'm sitting here today thinking about this, it then, you know, leads me to think, well, how much of a better deal are we going to get in the end as a town, even if we have a different number?
I think you raise a very good point. This is not a typical situation where you're selling a house and the broker does a CMA and they list it, they do comps and things like that. This is a situation, and it happened, I think, with Martell too. You get two parties, one says, you know, I think I'd like to get this amount for the place, and the other one says, well, I'm only going to pay this. So even if the appraisal came in higher, that's not to say that they would pay that. And I think there's a chance the appraiser could come in lower too. So, you know, this is really a kind of an arms-length transaction between two parties that have put a value of what they think is, is fair. This piece is only useful to this house. And so you have someone who's looking to buy the house and is willing to pay that. You have something that these people have been using forever and haven't been paying taxes on it, obviously, and it's going to go on the tax rolls. And $18,000 is, you know, you could do some good with that for the town too. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying and I think that under appropriate circumstances, an appraisal would be absolutely necessary. I just don't think that you're going to, it's necessary here. You have a little piece of property, you have two groups, you know, two parties that are willing to sell and buy, that's probably the fair market value, so.
And please don't miss-
I understand.
-my questions. My questions aren't to squeeze a couple thousand bucks out of the buyer. I'm just questioning the process and the methodology and what that might mean down the road.
I mean, I think if we were saying, you know, $1,500 for this piece, you know, it would be a different story, but it's a substantial amount of money they're paying for a little sliver of land and that's my own opinion. Obviously, you're the board and you have to make the decision.
And if the two of you want to vote, I mean, don't hold it up for me, I'll just vote in the negative. That's fine.
Yeah, and I'm, basically, I'm given, if there's some more information we can get and you're basically saying, I'm not comfortable with the information provided.
Right.
We can, if we can get that without holding up the process, we don't have to make that decision.
Then that's fine as well.
All right. My only question would be-
What, what is that? I think our assessor doing some type of internal analysis and opining on that would be enough for me. I don't think it needs to go to an appraisal. Based on your explanation, I think that's fair and reasonable. But I think it would be smart and safe to at least move the process to the assessor's office and have him look at it and say, okay.
I'm going to be with him tomorrow morning, actually. We're driving up to New Britain. So I'll bend his ear and see what he, what he has to say about it, if that's what you need to do. I just, and I know that our outside data is September 24th anyway, so we can get everything done. Get it in front of TPZ, I believe, at the beginning of the month and do it.
I believe our September meeting would be September 5th.
Is it?
So if, Mr. Crowley, if you care to make a motion to postpone this?
Sure. That being the case, then I move to, to move item six to a date certain, and that date certain being September 5th, 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Any public comment on the motion to postpone? Saying none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up, to authorize the First Selectman to accept a grant of $8,000 to pay for the incremental cost of a compressed natural gas vehicle for the senior center. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. That motion stands before us. Mr. White, can you fill us in, please?
Yes. Fairfield applied for a grant to pay for the incremental cost of a compressed natural gas vehicle to potentially replace an existing vehicle at the senior center. We would be, again, potentially replacing a 16-passenger bus for the six-passenger bus. It's a different configuration, more like an extended limo, more like an extended SUV than the traditional 16-passenger bus that looks like the traditional school short bus. It would be equipped with a wheelchair capability. The Connecticut Department of Transportation has approved the request for this incremental cost of $8,000. If the town accepts the award, we'd have one year to purchase the vehicle or not. The additional $40,000 for the basic price of the bus would be requested, again, I say potentially, in next year's budget. If the $40,000 is not requested or approved, there is no commitment to accept the grant or buy the grant. The reason why I'm saying potentially is that I'm really not convinced how we should move forward. I think we need to do some more homework, but we don't want to close the door on this opportunity, and there are no strings to accepting this, because we have a year to decide. I think we want to do some homework to analyze how much more efficient this is mileage-wise compared to our existing vehicles, and how it would be used by the senior center group to do their, you know, short trips to the hospital, which makes more sense for this type of vehicle versus running a bus on the highway, et cetera. The other thing I think would be, makes sense for us, is to, again, wait to the, get closer to the budget cycle, because we know better the condition of our existing fleet, and if one of the vehicles definitely has to be replaced, then we would move in this direction. So again, it's a simple request to give the First Selectman permission to accept it with no commitment to buy the bus or, you know, accept it down the line.
Thank you, Mr. White. Just to add in on that, I've had a chance to have several meetings with Senior Center Director Claire Grace and her staff, looking at senior center buses, transportation, what the needs are, and it appears that a number of the runs are for one or two people. Now, it might need a wheelchair, but one or two people. So the question then becomes, can this bus be more effective and efficient than the 16-passenger bus driving that all over Fairfield or to the upper reaches of Greenfield Hill for one or two people? So that's kind of what's being evaluated at this point, which might be a more cost-effective use of our dollars, even though many of them are grant dollars, but a more cost-effective use of our grant dollars than continuing to buy just the same 16-passenger model. So that's what's under discussion. We have a year to sort that out through the budget process, and this would be one of the grants that we would look to, to help finance that.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
A couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. White, and thanks to Mr. Bowman also for his efforts. First question is in the letter, the June 1st letter. It references both the natural gas vehicle and the natural gas grant that we're just discussing the $8,000 today. What's the status with the other 26, 252?
That was a choice between two vehicles, and we'd be accepting the grant that is for the vehicle that is the shorter model that makes sense, the 8,000.
So it's a one or the other proposition?
Yeah.
In other words, they're not offering us both?
No.
And it's either or?
Right. It's either or, and in either case, even if we, I think our best decision would be if one of the buses, for whatever reason, mechanically broke down, and the repairs were, didn't make sense to get it going again before the next budget cycle, we would move in this direction with a more efficient, smaller bus. So we decided that this is the one we want to pursue.
Okay. So once we say yes to the 8,000, we're saying no to the 26, 252?
Correct.
Okay. How many years, and I know you can't have a crystal ball, but what would the life expectancy be, do you think, of this vehicle?
On our existing ones, we're running anywhere between $10,000 to $15,000 a year, or on average, say $12,000 a year. And they seem to get, at the end of their useful life, at about $100,000, $110,000. So you're looking at, you know, nine to 12 years.
Okay. Nine to 10. And is your expectation, then, that even with a different kind of vehicle, that it would be the same?
Yeah, I'm just estimating.
Nine to 12?
Yeah.
Here? Okay. Part of why I raise that is just the population demographics and thinking about, you know, seven, eight years from now, do we expect our ridership to increase? I mean, have we looked at those numbers, and is that part of what the conversation will be in terms of evaluating? In other words, at this point, that's what's happening, but is that what the trend will be continuing, particularly with, you know, our baby boomers getting older and moving up?
That question might be better addressed to Senior Center Director Claire Grace.
Okay.
Ms. Grace, would you help us out and--
I kind of thought that might come up.
If you would come up to the podium and speak into the mic.
Yes. Our ridership was at a peak in 2003, 21,000 trip, people taking trips. It did go down in 210 to 15,274. Now, and in 211, we went up about 200. We're finding more and more younger people coming to the center, more and more driving. We run out of space down there a lot of times, but we're finding, what Rich says, we really need a smaller bus, because we take a lot of chemo and a lot of dialysis individuals that we have to take on when they have their appointment. So we're taking a big bus for one person, and that's what we have now. We actually thought we had it all figured out, and we're going to take one of the old police cars and use it. So we did for a few months with OKs, but we found out that we needed a delivery license, and we didn't have it. So now we're looking into that now, but they would not be wheelchair-accessible, the police cars, so we really do need something else.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I think my question is not about the past ridership, it's about the trend in the future, and do you have any way of looking at, you know, your current users' age and, for example, you're saying that now you have a lot more younger people who are driving?
Right, right. We've also--
In six years, will that be the case as well?
Well, we've also put in a new program, we're, actually, it's not up and running completely now, that is going to track our bus system. We've actually started it now, it's in social services. It will track our clients, what they're there for. Within a year, I think, we probably have a pretty good handle on what we're using our buses for, although it's actually broken down here as to, as to medicals, coming to the center, or shopping, and miscellaneous trips, which are taking the newspaper around and things like that, yeah.
So, and I guess what I would encourage or just, you know, suggest in terms of my own decision-making and looking at this is, besides what the trips are for, is looking at who the users are at the senior center now and how that might impact what kind of vehicle--
You mean age and what they're using it for?
Exactly. So in other words, my concern is this, and I, just to be clear, would certainly prefer a smaller vehicle, hopefully more fuel-efficient, it makes more sense in that respect. However, if we have, if we come upon a situation where in five years we find that that many more people are needing the service and we actually need a bigger vehicle, that's my question. And it would be great if we had a little bit more data to help answer that.
Oh, I can give you this, but as the ACT program gets up and running, we could give you the complete data. Yeah.
I also think that we should point out, this is one of four or five vehicles that they have, so this is the first move to kind of a smaller, more responsive vehicle that's perhaps more cost-effective, both in terms of operation and maintenance going forward.
Yes.
It might be something that we add into the mix of the fleet from this point on.
Right, and that makes sense.
You know, for years, we were neglected because we were privatized, so our buses really, am I right, Rick, really are in need of help.
Okay. Unless there are other questions?
Just quickly, nothing for Claire, other than thank you very much for everything you do down there. It's wonderful.
Oh, you're a dear.
Yeah, and I'm delighted to support this, but I just have one quick math question. If I read the document, am I interpreting it correctly to mean that if we take the eight and we fund the approximate 40, that the approximate price of the van is 48? Is that how that works?
Correct.
If that's the answer, then I'm good. It just wasn't clear that the price was 48 and eight? Okay.
Right. The base price of the vehicle's 40, to convert it to compressed natural gas is at incremental cost of eight, total 48.
Got you. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment from the public? All right, back to the board. Any further questions? Are we ready to vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you, Claire. Next up is an item for the name of the street on Daly Drive. We are still in the midst of trying to contact family relatives, so with the permission of the board, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this item till a date certain being September 5th.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, Fair TV Operational Committee Charge. To here consider and act upon revisions to the Fair TV Operational Committee Charge approved by the Board of Selectmen October 11th, 2006. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you. The motion is now before us. Would anyone like to start, or I'll be happy to put some comments out?
I would defer to you to start. You've been with it longer.
The, I think in looking at this, and I want to thank everybody who sent in material and thoughts. We've also gone out to a couple different towns to kind of see what they have. I guess I kind of see this as kind of two levels. One is a basic charge, but then a whole series of policy and procedural items. And if I had to kind of lay out the process, it would seem to me that this board ought to look at, in the short term, approving a charge for a committee, then identifying and nominating members to that committee, and having that committee come back to us with both an annual budget and some policies and procedures for how this board should operate, subject to the approval of this board. So once they get that, then they're off and running on their own. But rather than having us try to write the policies and procedures--
Yeah.
--it seems to me that the folks involved in this should be able to do that, subject to our review.
Mm-hmm.
So given that, the other thing I think that it's becoming obvious, if no other way, by having the two cameras that we have in front of us, that it, the future may hold more than Fair TV. It's some meetings, if not in everything. So I'd like to have this committee be responsible for Fairfield Public Access TV, so that if there's anything coming in, if nothing else, just the room logistics, so that they're organized, so that anybody who needs to can participate. And it seems to me that this committee ought to be in control of that, in addition to, or make recommendations for policies on that and procedures, in addition to guidance and oversight, if you will, for Fair TV itself. So given that, I guess I'd look at the title of this being the Fairfield Public Access TV Committee. As we look at the words in front of us, the purpose, "to promote, produce, distribute public cable TV programming on a town-specific cable TV channels regarding government, cultural, educational activities within the town, and to provide public access information to citizens on behalf of the town of Fairfield." I guess somehow I'd like to make that a bit broader in terms of to promote public cable TV programming for the town of Fairfield regarding governmental, cultural, and educational activities and issues within the town, and to provide public access information to citizens on behalf of the town of Fairfield. And probably removing the channel at 78 and 79, just because the cable isn't changes their numbers. I'm not sure we want to be in a position to have it come back and change the charge. Also, I guess as a process, as we go through this today, it seems to me that we probably are changing this enough that I would think that we'd want to hold it over, both for us to consider about it and for anybody to--
To react to it.
--to react to it.
Okay.
Committee membership, five to seven members appointed by the Board of Selectmen, I'm okay with. I'm not sure we need to put in here one member from the Area 2 Cable TV Advisory Council, though I'm not opposed to that. I just wouldn't necessarily want to have this board bound by that, and at times there may be, if that Cable 2 Advisory Council were to go away, because I believe that's a state-mandated item, wouldn't want this to be constricted by that.
Okay. Just on that--
Yeah.
--we don't need to do this now, maybe we can do it offline. I just probably need a little refresher on who the Area 2 Cable Advisory Council is and what they do, and some more information about them, just in general.
Sounds like some recent background. Did you have--
Yeah. I think it would be helpful to kind of get an overview.
Just quick, even if it's a document to read, I just, you know, would like to know a bit more about them.
Yeah. I mean, I'm wondering, I know that there are people here today, if we can get some information today, since we've had this item, we have it today, we'd like to do some, perhaps, you know, as with other committees, if we take this back and submit things to you and come back, I don't know exactly procedurally how you want to do that, but it seems like there are people in the room who could answer some of those questions, perhaps, could take advantage of that.
That's fair as well. I'm just wanting, sorry to interrupt you.
No, no problem. Is there somebody from the Area 2 Cable Advisory Council in the room? Mr. Spino, if you would? Can you, are you allowed to take the mic and--
And I was just asking for, like, briefly, what they are and what they do versus-- And I was just asking for, like, briefly what they are and what they do versus any lengthy historical presentation on, yeah, sure.
I've been a member of the Cable Advisory Council since about 2007.
Good, thank you.
And advisory-
Excuse me.
Oh, Jerry Spino, Cable Advisory Council member, Area Two Fairfield representative.
Thank you.
Cable Advisory Councils in general have existed in cable access since its inception. Actually, it even lives in federal law. Recently here in Connecticut, well, not recently, since some elements have come into play here in Connecticut, there has been some discussions about Advisory Councils. However, our neighboring Area Two, Westport, Eleven Cities, towns in the Area Two have a Cable Advisory Council. Other communities have Cable Advisory Councils. Our grant is maintained by the Cable Advisory Council. They get a block grant of a hundred thousand dollars and it's distributed via grant application. In regard to the concern about, well, if it went away, I think if you put it into the charge, and perchance for some reason it went away, the committee could come to you and the charge could be amended. But at this point in time, Cable Advisory Council members are pretty knowledgeable about the law regarding cable. And I think it's important, when you're forming a committee of individuals who are not, it's important to have a person who knows what's happening. The other thing as well is, is that although Fairfield has, we have our little independent unit, the number of towns, the various six work together to, well, they work together to get the money that paid for all this equipment here, you know, and various elements like that over time. So, I feel that to remove them from a status in the charge would leave sort of a void in, in the larger picture.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No. I'm good.
Thanks. Good. Thank you, Jerry.
Flit's got the camera.
Getting crowded in the back of the room there.
I think, for me, it would be helpful to, perhaps here, I know, I see Mr. Cannelli here. I, I think that this committee and, you know, Selectman Kylie may well be familiar with the ins and outs. I have learned more, but I know there's a lot to it in terms of the background and history of how we've gotten here. This charge that's before us was revised in 2006, a lot has changed since then. And for me, it would be helpful to get just a snapshot, if we could, a brief snapshot of that, because it may help put the council, the Cable Advisory Council piece kind of in context. And I would, I think that would be helpful.
Very good.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Mr. Cannelli, would you mind giving us some insight?
Thanks very much for selecting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor. For the record. For the record, my name is Jim Cannelli. I served as the, as a member of the Fair TV Operational Committee from July of 2008 and as vice chairman from August of 2008 until March of 2009. And from March of 2009 until, I'm not exactly sure when exactly, I served as the chairman of the Fair TV Operational Committee. I know it was at least as recently as April 12th, because that was when a letter signed by the First Selectman authorized me and the committee to accept the funds that we applied for to the Cable Advisory Council, Area Two. But I do believe that there's a great need for a successor agency. The work of the Operational Committee is complete. The goal of the Operational Committee was to build the Fair TV broadcast system. I know because it was a labor of love, that I have to say, I put a great deal of time into missing family vacations, providing rides to college students who were covering meetings, et cetera. So, it's very important to me that what the successor agency is, that is created, is fair. The three of you today, this board, are facing a very, very important choice today, a critical choice. I've handed out to you an outline for the charge for a Fair TV commission. A Fair TV commission, not a committee that comes back to you after you've picked some people and they all work it out. A Fair TV commission that would be enshrined in our town charter. And I would just, let me just say one thing. The rationale for this and the basis for what you're looking at, and if you let me have the opportunity, I'll go through what I think you should do, what you decide will be your own choice, and we can talk about some of the history behind it. Sure.
Well, I, I am interested to hear your perspective.
Right.
I think the thing that Selectman Kylie is looking for, and I think for the viewing public as well as just for us as a board, it would be a brief, not, not a long, but a brief history and an understanding of how Fair TV fits into the region, how it is structurally, just from a framework.
Absolutely.
Framework would be helpful.
Absolutely, that would be great. And then we can talk a little bit about why it's so critical that you treat this, members of this board, as though you were, for the first time, creating a town ethics board. How critical it is that it not be some ad hoc collection of folks that have to be picked because they sent in resumes and now they're going to come back and tell you what they're going to do. I would also say, I was very concerned when I heard the, the commentary regarding the world, the future may include other entities besides Fair TV. We've been down this road, as I'll describe today, before, this kind of road, and it is a disaster for the people of Fairfield who have come to expect town-specific government and education access. Let's explain. As Mr. Spino said, the idea behind, behind having public access, government access, and education access is, lives in federal law. That is, in the 1980s, you had the monopoly providers of cable television systems come to communities all across America looking to install their service. The federal government said, "We understand that the need for a monopoly provider will be required." This is, we were able to wire the country for phone service, we needed a benign monopoly to get that done. But in exchange for that, cable providers, you need to provide public, educational, and government access for the citizens of these communities, because this is a privilege that you have, equivalent to the airwaves. For public access, you should provide a space on the, on your broadcast band that allows people to create their own content. Whoever provides that space should not interfere with the content, shouldn't be paid to make that content, but rather should let, you know, a million flowers bloom. That was the idea behind the public element of what we now refer to as PEG, P-E-G, Public Education and Government. The law also, the federal government also said, "Let's have education access. Let's make sure that you can see your Board of Education. Let's make sure that you can see your high school graduation on one of these channels. You shouldn't just see the networks provided." And finally, let's have government access. Let's have the meetings of the primary boards and committees and commissions that your towns and, that your towns have to operate the government. But the federal government said, "Let's let states decide how they want to implement this." In the state of Connecticut, the decision was, beginning in the 1980s, that they would break up the various sections of the state into regions, cable regions. That's when you heard Mr. Spino talk about Cable Advisory Area Two, Mr. Kylie?
Right.
And Cable Area Advisory Group Nine, or Region Nine. Region Nine is Greenwich and Stamford and Darien, communities to our west. Cable Area Two are communities primarily to our east, Fairfield, Bridgeport, Milford, Stratford, Woodbridge, Orange, and Milford. We are part of that group, as was decided by state law back, you know, 25 years ago. Initially, Cable Vision of Southern Connecticut, which was awarded this contract to service this region, which we were included in, had this responsibility to provide PEG services. The federal government said, "You'll give up your airspace, you'll give up three channels, which you could use for profit, but we're gonna, we're not going to force you to pay for this. We'll ask subscribers to pay a small fee." To that amounts about fifty or sixty cents per month, which you can find on your, your cable bill, if you're a cable subscriber. That amounts maybe today, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of six, seven dollars per household. So, you can imagine that that means that ratepayers for cable here in Fairfield, if there are 12, 13,000 households that have cable potentially, you're talking about maybe a hundred thousand dollars is being paid since the 1980s, somewhere in that early 1990s, for this service. Cable Vision of Southern Connecticut, the cable provider, agreed to this, and it collected those fees. But what happened was, it did a very poor job. It folded in the three channels, it did not really live up to its responsibility. And activists in the 1990s went out and they sought the DPUC, the Department of Public Utility Control, now succeeded as PURA on the state level, to go ahead and to replace Cable Vision. Allow Cable Vision of Southern Connecticut to keep collecting those fees, but give a third party the chance to try to provide these services, these public, education, and government services to the region. Now, Cable Vision did some terrific things. One of the things it did do was it, it wired the town with an analog wiring system, here in Town Hall, that's in a bunch of our schools and a whole bunch of places all over town, called the INET. And it left it in place. And I'll talk about it a little bit later, but that's one of the good things it did. But the hassle, the headache, and I can tell you that, having been the volunteer system manager that assigned folks to cover meetings for the last two and a half years. The headache of getting people to come to a finance meeting, Board of Finance meeting, that's no knock on gentlemen, you've been part of a finance meeting, or an RTM meeting in the dead of February, is a difficult thing. No matter how terrifically dedicated a person is, when it's nine degrees outside and they're looking at a four-hour meeting and going home at 1:00 a.m., that's tough stuff. Especially when the budgets for this kind of stuff are relatively miniscule. The going rate is $25 an hour. And that's, not $25 an hour after taxes, that's $25 that's paid to folks who are thinking of having to essentially keep about half of that. So, this regional provider in the 1990s was Soundview Community Media. It was a nonprofit, and the activists were excited, they felt they'd finally found their white knight. And on the public side of things, they did an absolutely fine job. They got office space on State Street in Bridgeport, they set up a studio, and they, you know, began the process of making sure that, that public access, that you, Mr. Kylie, if you decided that you thought a show about, you know, the inside of, you know, Board of Finance workings would be a great show, and how really it's an exciting life, and you want to talk about, you know, how accounting can change your life, you could have a show. Or if you wanted Selectman Vehi to do a show on how it's especially challenging to be a distance runner and a, and a public official, you could have a show on that public access channel. You'd be trained how to use the equipment, which in those days was very bulky, it was the kind of cameras you remember, the big kind of cameras with the NBC on the side kind of cameras, very large cameras. You'd learn how to use all that equipment, and that was terrific, there was a training program in place. But during the late 1990s, just as Cable Vision did, eventually saw the, the headache in trying to cover the region with videographers who could cover these different meetings in these six towns, so too it became clear that at some point, Soundview realized this was going to, this was a no-win for them. They just weren't able to get it done. And they were supported in this by the DPUC that also didn't seem to understand the differences, we've looked back in the record, we're not sure exactly why, between having a public access channel where you don't get in the way of the preacher, or the, or the skateboarders, or the jazz musician aficionado, or the select woman who likes to run and wants a TV show who produces it herself, you get right out of the way. They couldn't understand, it appeared, the difference, the DPUC, and began to support this idea that education access, that is covering those meetings that nobody wants to cover, and government access, all those meetings, should be done by volunteers. And if volunteers happen to put some stuff up there, it was great. If not, you can figure out what you want to do with that stuff, Soundview. So, what happened? The activists, who, many of whom were part of Cable Advisory Area Two, you've met Mr. Jacobson last meeting, I think, who briefly spoke before you, he was the chairman of Cable Advisory Council for Area Two for many years. These folks now were frustrated, they went before the DPUC and said, "This is, this isn't working. We, we need a new approach to see that government meetings and education meetings and these elements are being properly run. This isn't being done." But the DPUC felt that the, the alternatives offered, offered by many of those activists weren't particularly realistic, because essentially, the idea of finding people who'd be crazy enough to work for free to set up town-specific channels and for years run them for no pay, because that's what you'd need, because the money was so small, like myself, was, in their mind, impossible. But in fact, the activists continued to press their case, and they finally went to the legislature. And in 2008, the legislature approved PA 150, oh, '08, 159, and was signed by Governor Rell. And that legislation allowed for a sliver of the about $700,000 collected regionally, an estimated $700,000 sliver, about $100,000 of that. You heard Mr. Spino talk about the $100,000 pool maybe a little while ago? Essentially, what they said was, "Listen, Cable Vision of Southern Connecticut is collecting $700,000 from ratepayers, 50 cents a month, 75 cents a month at a time, for PEG fees, for public, to support public access, education access, government access. We, you communities in, in Cable Area Two, Fairfield being one of those, along with Milford and Orange and all the rest, you're unhappy. What we're going to do is, we're going to take $100,000 away from Soundview, we're going to put it in a pool beginning in December of, or the fall of 2008, and we're going to let you communities write us a, write a letter to Soundview and say, 'Hey, listen, we want control of our education channel and our government channel, if we, if we feel we're poorly served.'" And sure enough, the First Selectman at the time, Mr. Flato, authorized the town attorney to allow the then-chairman of the Fair TV Operational Committee to request our channels. And we got a DVD player up, and remember that INET I mentioned? We got it set up downstairs, connected to that little INET that was basically a set of, of wires that go to Norwalk, where the Southern Cable, Cable Vision of Southern Connecticut head end is, and now they could broadcast. And we had no money, so we had a DVD, an old DVD player, and poor Neil Fink used to have to bang on the door of Town Hall to get in if, if, right at the end of the day, if the DVD player broke, but he hung with it. He was terrific, he was a good friend of mine, I have enormous appreciation for his efforts. Neil was chairman prior to my service. So, what happened though unfortunately was, is that the committee we had at the time was a lot like what was briefly described here before you by the First Selectman. It was ad hoc, it wasn't, it was, it was fairly loosely drawn, the members were left to their own devices to, to do what they want to do. And what did that create? It created initially a committee that was at war with itself. You would think after we had, as a town, agreed we wanted to take these two channels and operate them in a town-specific manner, as the state legislature allowed us and asked us to take funds, or asked Soundview to provide funds to the community to do it, that we get that chance. I mean, understand something, what happened in the last few, five or six years, say 2003 to 2008, under Soundview, they were filling your government access channel, right now, folks are going to see this tomorrow, they're going to see First Selectman Tetra. They were filling that with free feeds of the Pentagon channel on the government channel. That's what Soundview Community Media was putting on the regional feed for, for, you know, government access. What was going on the education access? Was it the Board of Education? Was it work produced by students in the, by the Fairfield Public Schools? No. Was it the high school graduation at Ward or Ludley? No. It was old episodes of the Annenberg Communication Project, operas, ballet from the 1970s and 80s. Free cost, pulled in off a satellite, put on your education and government channels. That's Soundview. That's what, you heard, you heard the First Selectman earlier talk about this idea, there may be more than Fair TV out there because we have a camera here. Why do we have a camera here? I'll get to that in a minute. Our committee, our Fair TV committee, our loosely drawn Fair TV committee, a committee not in the charter, not constructed like an ethics committee, with clear penalties for things like conflict of interest, what did it give us? Well, just as I was arriving on the committee, we had a chairman who decided to hire one of his own employees to videotape meetings, who'd never videotaped a meeting, and we figured that out when she emailed myself and Mr. Fink saying, "How do you move video to a computer?" We had another member who consistently voted against operating the G channel, the government channel, Fair TV government, who we learned was being paid by Soundview Community Media, not at $25 an hour, and this was a gentleman who was an older man in his 50s, an IT professional who had never shot a minute of video professionally. He was being paid $75 an hour by Soundview to go out and cover meetings, just like meetings are now being covered. Why is there a camera here? Because as the First Selectman knows, in May, there was contact not only with us, but with the town of Milford, by ATT Uverse representatives. Why did ATT Uverse, a video provider, come see us? Why did they, why did they want to visit us and visit Milford, who do government, town-specific and education, town-specific programming? Because they had signed a contract with Soundview Community Media for that service, and they were fed up with not getting their money's worth. They came to us and said, "We want to work with you and figure out how we can get Fair TV." Because their subscribers, which I believe at one time, for a selectwoman, Vehi, you were one of, wanted Fair TV, they wanted their meetings. What happened? Shortly after those meetings occurred in Milford- Because their subscribers, which I believe at one time, a selectwoman, they you were one of, wanted fair TV, they wanted their meetings. What happened? Shortly after those meetings occurred in Milford and in Fairfield, those cameras appeared that the first selectman is speaking of. Let me make clear, I understand as a political person, Selectman Kylie, First Selectman, Mr. Castelot, the executive director of Soundview Community Media, who collects a salary in excess of $100,000 a year.
Mr. Cannelli, if you could please not use that kind of personal information in this format.
Absolutely, I apologize. Well, not personal, it is a matter of public record, I agree.
If you could please not misconstrue in that fashion.
I absolutely will, absolutely.
You have a lot to say, if you keep it to the factual.
Absolutely, that is a fact, but actually, I agree, I don't want to appear, I don't want to appear in any way that I'm, I have a personal indebted or something, I don't. I think Mistress Castelot has done a terrific side on the public access side, absolutely. It's on the E and G side that has been so frustrating for us in dealing over the years with Soundview. But I would say to you, this idea now, I have to tell you, this is absolutely exhausting, sitting here and listening, because what we went through, to, as I was saying, we had this member of our fair TV committee that was loosely drawn, that had no penalty as there is, as you can see here, I've talked about and we can hopefully get to this today. You know, we came here a month ago, and I've come back again, I came back from work 90 minutes away to be here in time today, so I'd like the opportunity to go over what I suggest to you today here on the public record, in terms of what you need to do in terms of a future fair TV committee. And I please ask you not to go down this route suggested of some sort of ad hoc, loosely constructed operation out of the first selectman's office, this is a terrible idea. What happened when I had a committee member voting against turning on the G-channel we had requested, that led eventually to the Cable Advisory Council of Area Two in March of 2009, suspending the grant we'd won to turn on that G-channel? That member of my committee, clearly in a conflict of interest, being paid, remember I said $25 an hour? He was being paid $75 an hour, three times the going rate for someone who'd never shot video by Soundview? He was voting to stop that channel from running. No recourse. I went to the first selectman's office, I asked about, "Well, what's going on here? We have a, clearly have a member in conflict. He's being paid by the entity we've been asked to serve as his successor to." There was no process, he remained on the committee. He remained on the committee.
Mr. Cannelli, could you please clarify which first selectman you spoke about?
That was First Selectman Flato, not yours. And Mr. Tetro, I understand completely that you are a person, I truly know is reasonable and hears all voices and wants very much to see consensus. There are times though, Mr. First Selectman, when black plus white equaling gray is a bad idea. And this is one of those times. Those cameras you mentioned, again, as I say, they're prompted by the fact, as you well know, having been CC'd on the communications with ATT Uverse, they are here now as a desperate one-camera, last-minute effort. Where were these cameras for three years, four years, five years during the contract time that ATT Uverse was supposed to be providing these services? And as I said, this is, I've seen this before. We had a committee member who was going out and shooting whatever he really wanted. He would, you know, was he shooting the Board of Selectmen all the time? Was he shooting the RTM, which were challenging? No, he was at, you know, the Economic Development Corporation, 45 minutes, one camera out. But he was getting paid three times the going rate, 75 bucks an hour. So that was what I faced in 2009. When the grant was suspended in 2009 by Cable Advisory Council of Area Two, Mr. Fink resigned in frustration, and I was the vice-chairman at the time. And I became the interim chairman. My decision was, and frankly, Mr. Fink was a terrific decent man, but he was struggling with this loosely-run, not part of the town charter, committee who had the responsibility of, we all agree, it was an incriminious power. These are the two channels plus an online service that inform the people of Fairfield, who allow you and your deliberations to be viewed. Now, when Mr. Fink resigned out of frustration of the fact that he essentially didn't know what to do anymore, I made a decision just simply to move ahead. We paid the videographer who was, or we allowed the videographer who was working for Soundview to do what he wanted, as long as he wasn't being paid, as long as he was being paid, he really didn't care what went on. We had an opinion from the town attorney that we could turn on our G-channel in August of '09, and I had a broadcast server installed where I missed a vacation, as I worked with a consultant to get it installed downstairs in the cabinet in Town Hall. I encourage you, selectmen, to please, and all of this board to go down and take a look at the equipment there. We had built, with fair TV technologically, a lightweight, cost-efficient, value-engineered system, Mr. First Selectman, that truly, the people of the town of Fairfield, regardless of whether we spent essentially to get here, all grant dollars that were essentially from subscribers, but we spent those dollars to make the system as light and simple and as less burdensome as it could be in terms of the cost to ratepayers or taxpayers. In 2009, the members of the committee who were blocking the G-channel after we had a town attorney's opinion saying that we could turn it on, left the committee. And the remaining three members of the committee, who were always committed to seeing government and education access go forward, stayed on the committee, and as needed, they met over the last three years, and I worked as the station manager. I would say, one quick addendum, the member who was first selling his services to Soundview Community Media, three times the going rate to vote against us being able to succeed them, he later hung on the committee for a little while longer. He went to a couple of businesses I won't name and told them that he would work on public-spirited public service programs for them, he would videotape it for them. Now, he wasn't particularly a skillful or professional videographer, having only worked with our equipment for a brief time, that's six months, but what he was selling was our non-commercial airtime. He was saying as a member of, he was literally, as he had been selling his vote to Soundview. Okay, I'm sorry?
May I?
Sure.
Well, I just want to thank you for the framework, but I think, at this point, for me, just a couple comments, because I think it's helpful to understand the legislation, the organizational structure, and some of the history. So now, for me, and clearly, there have been political and personal interests that have also been part of the struggle. And just a couple things, one is that I, I'll just speak for myself, but I imagine that my sentiments are shared by my colleagues on the board and many other people in town government, that having, having the ability to have the specific programming here in our town has been a tremendous asset. And I am incredibly grateful to everyone. You and Mr. Spino, Mr. Fink are some of the people you've named, and all the other people who, you know, forgive me for not having all the names, but I think now, today, what we have, because I think you've given us successfully, at least from my perspective, a good history and framework. We have before us background material, which is the current charge of the Fair TV Operational Committee, which was revised in 2006. You just distributed to us a document that I'm seeing for the first time in writing, called the Fair TV Commission, which, you know, as I'm trying to listen in flight, but also page through and just take a brief look at this. This is a lot to digest.
It is. What I would ask, First Selectman.
Just let me finish for a second. A couple comments on this, I think you have a couple valid concerns and points, you know, some of which are procedural, and I think we could address those here today, but from my perspective, I would love to have a kind of condensed summary of your, rather than going through this, because my position is I would like to take this and digest this. I'm a visual learner, I'd like to hear kind of your brief thoughts, and then, I mean, obviously, it's up to our chairman and the first selectman to take these, given this, and to go back with those, and come back, and then be able to have a full conversation. I don't know.
I think the number points, one, I think it's, what we're trying to do is, at one level, to Mr. Cannelli's point, make this more of a formal group, give it more substance, and have it reported to the Board of Selectmen as opposed to just the first selectmen, as I gather, using your loosen framework ahead of time. The other point, in terms of making this part of the charter, difficult certainly, and that causes other issues. However, it may be something that is, and again, based on the cost of this board, to check with the RTM and see if they'd like to incorporate this into an ordinance and make it a more formal part of the town code, which might be a compromise between not charter, but still, for an issue, and throw somewhat in that direction.
Just to comment specifically, so that everyone understands, that we don't get to decide if it's part of the charter.
No, I know that, we'd have to have some sort of referendum, and I understand that's a high hurdle.
But I think, so there, so to me, that's one of the things, I just wanted to make sure that went on the record, so that everybody understood, and I know you do as well. You know, from a charter standpoint, that's a much different conversation, the ordinance is more doable in the short term, if that's a goal, and I think it's worth.
Well, here's my question for you.
Excuse me, if you could.
No, just to say, I think, for me, part of why I interrupted you, and I thank you for everything that you've said, but if you can give us kind of a condensed.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Summary of this, and.
Look, a condensed summary now verbally, or in a document forthcoming?
If, since, because I respect the fact that he's here today, and just a condensed summary of this, I don't want to go through this step by step, because like I said, I haven't been able to read it and look at it, and.
Well, just, again, I want to, can I respond to that? Can I respond? I absolutely agree that, you know, it's good to read things, and I think that you should have time and ponder of reflection. My concern is this, we were here a month ago, and we began to address the board, thinking that this was the beginning of the process. I sat in that chair and watched as instead, the first selectman laid out what his vision was, and actually, in the agenda today, there was actually discussion, there was possibility of action for voting today. I absolutely, after four years of service, of being, I don't want to, you know, pat myself on the back and give myself a cramp here, but I'm telling you, I'm the father of this thing. I've stayed in on a lot of different stuff. You know, Jerry covers those meetings now relentlessly, but before he was here, I was the one bringing those college kids to meetings. I saw you at many a meeting, Selectman. Fair TV, the outline here, and again, I understand as a member of another elected, and by the way, as a member of elected board, understand, I would have to make a choice. If I wanted to apply to be a member, by making this a charter-walled commission, I would face a choice, because I'd have to stay either as an elected official in the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, or I would have to request to be a member here. But I'm willing to do that because the concern about making sure that fair TV remains fair, and also that the mission of the committee does not somehow begin to get fuzzy again, which I'm a little worried about after I heard some of the remarks from the first selectman today about there are multiple, there are multiple cameras here. There are multiple cameras here because fair TV is here. If I thought tomorrow those cameras would stay for the next 50 years, I'll walk away, you can set up whatever kind of committee you want. If it survives, it survives. But understand, you have an important duty now. Now, as far as this goes, I would like, Selectman, I think you should have as much time to digest this, but I would ask that you give me an opportunity, this took a great deal of time for me to develop, I'd like on the record, on camera, so that not just you, not just you, First Selectman, not just you, Selectman Kylie, but the people of Fairfield will hear this. They'll hear these points, I'm going to distribute it to the press, and we'll find a way to get it up online as well, but they need to hear here, and I know it's tough, it's been a long day, but I raced back here 90 minutes to be here. And I would ask you, this one time, that you hear as the longtime chairman of this committee, what I think makes sense, and it's not because of the fact that I, you know, I need my blueprint to be what the final thing is, because I've lived through weak committees without any proper process. And let's just see, I'll try to go as briefly as I can, but I would just ask you, just on these points, so that folks who then see this, hopefully, in the press, or see this online, will hear why I came to these conclusions, that's all I'd ask. I ask you five minutes to do so, is that possible?
If you could, is that okay?
That's five minutes.
And just to be clear, Mr. Cannelli was very kind in his remarks earlier in terms of mentioning the work, but there's no question that fair TV would not be what it is today without Mr. Cannelli's work and input over the last four years, and his vision, really, in putting all this together. And Mr. Spino's hard work, and as we've all gotten to know, Jerry, as he has personally sat through probably more of these meetings than any one of us, and then, Mr. Kylie, in your case, that's a whole lot of meetings.
That's a lot of meetings, that's true.
So, the town owes.
Mr. Spino will remember that when his contract is up for renewal. But I thank you, I thank you for.
The town of Fairfield owes both of you a big debt of thanks in terms of putting all this together, so.
Well, you're welcome.
But that is an intro, please continue.
Absolutely. You're welcome. And I would just say to you that you have made efforts, I think, because, you know, we did request town dollars, to try to ensure that those dollars are protected, and you know, I'm always comfortable where we spent our money, I know, because every dollar has been handled by, has been, you know, a check has been written by the Board of, by the Department of Finance, and anyone who wants to know where the money went can go to the Department of Finance. If they want a more detailed description, we've had to provide after-action reports, you know, after-award reports, for four straight years where the money went, to the Cable Advisory Council of Area Two. By the way, Mr. Kylie, one last point on that, not that it's not fascinating, cable advisory councils were officially, by state law, there's been an effort to phase them out as official entities, and the reason is, is that cable advisory council was part of that monopoly world we talked about. In other words, when you had monopoly cable providers, you needed an advisory council to sort of help ratepayers have a place to go if they had a complaint. What is, been the de facto situation with Cablevision of Southern Connecticut, much to its credit, is that it has, continues to treat the cable advisory council as what it is, an advisory group it values, but Cablevision of Southern Connecticut is now a video service provider, much like ATT Uverse's. It's no longer a monopoly, it's not treated quite exactly as a monopoly, because it has competitors. You can get your video over your phone lines now, so the state law has reflected that. But as an entity, as a de facto entity, it remains, it's an entity that the participating member communities are expected to provide appointed membership to, in the last six months, we've had reappointments through the first selectman's office, Mr. Spino's been a superb advocate on behalf of fair TV and regional access. So, just so you understand kind of that differentiation, you may hear, there is no such thing. It isn't that, it's that the law has changed in terms of how it is treated, but for de facto purposes, it remains what it is. But let's look, if you could, take a minute, the fair TV commission, concept that I'm presenting to you. And again, I'm open to a lot of different ideas, but I would tell you that probably fair TV, if you left the operational committee, not that I wanted to do this, you let the operational committee in, well, you handled a brief, you know, you added this to the town charter as part of a referendum, say this November or something, we could do it. Or if you even acceded to the idea that next year, by referendum, this got onto the charter, and there would be ordinances that outline this.
Mr. Kylie, that's not how getting on a charter works.
Okay, no problem.
So, I would suggest that.
I'll research that, I apologize, but let me just, let me just talk about.
We'll stay with your point, we understand your commitment to making this.
Great, okay. Anyway, let me go through this, thank you very much for it, Mr. First Selectman, and I apologize, I'm very passionate about this. Anyway, a couple things, in the legal standing, we mentioned there's this issue over charter, but my point is just basically, you can't just let it be something that, you know, is a creature of the Board of Selectmen. That's no knock on the Board of Selectmen, this is akin to the Ethics Committee, and that's why I've crafted this the way I have.
Commission.
Ethics commission, and thank you very much, I apologize. So, what would be my take on this? You should have three members nominated by unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen, one each from the Democratic and Republican Parties, or the two majority parties or established parties, and one either registered as unaffiliated or selected unanimously by the Board of Selectmen. In other words, the representatives from your body should be, just like the Ethics Commission, members that all of you can support, so that there's no chance that anyone looking from the outside can say, "These nominees are a reflection of the particular political concerns of those, the party in power." We don't want that, just like we don't want on the Ethics Commission, because fair TV isn't the Golf Commission, or the Recreation Commission, it is akin to the Ethics Commission. It is as close as you'll get, it's the video equivalent. My suggestion was to have a member nominated by the Fairfield Chapter of the League of Women Voters in accordance with their procedures for appointment to office, and to have a member nominated by the Fairfield Parent Teacher Council, and a nominee might be a member of the council or designee of the council membership. And that is, you know, again, why, who is the nonpartisan watchdog for government affairs, and who has attended all of our meetings over the years? The Fairfield Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Who hosts all the debates we have in town that people respect for being bipartisan and fair? The Fairfield Chapter of the League of Women Voters.
Many of the debates.
Many debates, okay, fair enough, you're right, there are others, but the ones that I think people best know. Who hosts the legislative forum each January that includes all members regardless of party? The Fairfield League, Fairfield Chapter of the League of Women Voters. So I can't think of a better organization with a 75-year history in this town to be an appointed, to be a member, or be the entity that nominates a member, to be part of this committee, to see that fair TV remains fair. And then again, we have fair TV education to guide, and who better than a representative representing the interests of the parent teacher, the parent teacher associations throughout Fairfield? So that's why that's there. All nominees for the fair TV commission shall be approved by a vote of the representative town meeting. You can resist this, but it's, but I assure you, all you do by agreeing to this, the way the Ethics Commission is approved by the RTM vote, is you add another step, another imprimatur on this that makes it fairer. You can absolutely use this as an outstanding communications tool, but if the RTM votes on this, if everyone gets their theories about who will be, what will be fair, what won't be, it will only add to the legitimacy of the coverage and by fair TV, and how fair TV is operated. Terms of members. Terms of members of service, I put this in here, I thought, you know, September 1st, since you're looking through some meetings in August, you can do whatever you want, four years, it just strikes me, it should, you know, be, it could be three, it could be, I don't think that's significant, but we should have some term of office. I think four years isn't bad, because it's kind of the life of the Board of, a particular Board of Selectmen nominating. Meetings, Fair TV, the Fair TV Commission should meet and conduct business in accordance with the Town Charter of Fairfield under new, a new Article 10, Section 1B, 1 to 4. Again, the idea behind this is essentially just that we have the appropriate number of meetings, at least 10 a year, the Robert's Rules of Order, and an ordinance could cover the same thing, Mr. First Selectman, we could, we could spell that out, if that was the case. Duties, the powers and the duties of the Fair TV Commission shall be enumerated in the Town Charter, okay, again, let's throw that out, but here's what they would be. I would say, though, that powers and duties of, you know, the Golf Commission are enumerated in the Town Charter, so somehow we managed to do that, and here we've got the TV stations that are supposed to be overseeing the Board of, you know, the government and the education system of this town. I think, you know, we, that's pretty important. First, provide oversight for the Fair TV broadcast system herein defined as Fair TV Education, Fair TV Government, and Fair TV On Demand. That's the broadcast system we now operate. It doesn't talk about Channel 78 or 79, that's absolutely true. The system we have in place downstairs can act completely on the Internet if necessary, or over SoundView's air, or over ATT's air with their assistance, which they're moving forward with. So that's, that's what we're talking about. Fair TV Government covers all the government meetings, education, the education meetings, and on-demand is that service you can go to on the Internet. Such oversight shall include the promotion of quality town-specific education and government access programming for the town of Fairfield by: A) ensuring efficient, cost-effective broadcast operations. They've got to be value engineered and stay that way, Mr. First Selectman, they have to stay that way. B) requiring delivery of broadcast content that is comprised primarily of coverage of the lead executive, legislative, educational, financial, and land-use elected entities within the town of Fairfield, and secondarily, nonpartisan town and public school-related events and programs. Remember, I spoke about that individual who was hired by the regional provider at three times the rate, and showed up at, you know, Economic Development Commission meetings? Important, but that wasn't supposedly the charge, and that wasn't what we're supposed to be doing here first. The primary duty of this, these channels are to cover these meetings. Ensuring public support for town-specific access in Fairfield and in the region by working with local groups and regional entities committed to quality delivery of those services. D) commending all materials deemed appropriate for the public access channel rather than the education or government access channel to the regional provider. That's currently a SoundView. In other words, if I see Fair TV Education, and I want to do, I want to do a program about how great charter schools are, or I see Fair TV Education, and I want to do a show about how homeschooling is great, that is beyond the scope of Fair TV Education. However, it's perfectly within the scope of the public access channel, and someone who wants to create that program can get that service, or if they've created that program, that's where that belongs. The same is true for government officials, who may, on their own, create programming that they would like to see, that they think has a point of view, "Why did I vote this way?" If they want to control that, rather than appear on Fair TV's air, and be asked questions by, you know, Fair TV, but they want to control that process, then we can commend them, we can move them to the public access channels, and so I think that's, that's very important. Two, appoint, and set terms of employment and compensation for the Fair TV Broadcast System Manager, and all video producers and interns in a manner consistent with the requirements of fairness expressed in the Town Charter of Fairfield, Article 11, Section 4. Why is this important? I'll tell you why. Just recently, the operational committee met, we weren't quite sure if we were out of business or not, and you can go on the town website, you can see the minutes of that meeting. I mean, the truth is, we are the three lonely warriors, we hung in there, Jerry had been working at a pittance, he'd taken over my duties this spring, because we went to live broadcast in terms of being the system manager, and we awarded him that title, and, as a promotion, after reviewing, you can look at the minutes and see all that. But my point is, is that in, we had $28,000 set aside to pay him his stipend for the year, so we were nearly there, but because we had asked for this $25,000 from the town this spring, and I asked for it because we'd lived and died by a grant process, where some years we get X dollars, and some years we get less dollars from the Cable Advisory Council, they have to serve a whole bunch of communities, we wanted some stability. Well, as a result, and a reasonable request by the First Selectman, he asked that he essentially do the hiring here. First Selectman worked out an agreement with our station manager, that he would essentially follow the broad guidelines of what had been suggested by what was viewed as an expired committee, but he was willing to go along, and we appreciate that. But it's crucial that you have a committee, if you're going to have a committee, you ought to have a committee where the system manager, the interns, and the videographers work for the committee, not for the Board of Selectmen, not for the town administration. Think about it, how can somebody who is answering to the government cover the government appropriately? That is impossible. The committee has to hire, has to set the terms of the persons who are going to cover you. You cannot be in charge of that. You cannot. I'm on the TPZ. If I want to stay on this committee, Mr. First Selectman, and you decided, because even though I'm such a low-key personality, and barely speak up, that I should be on it, then I'm going to have to make a choice. I stayed on the operational committee because, yes, I resisted the chance to have swelling music put behind me whenever I spoke about burns and swales, but, but, but the point is, is that now, these are going to be decisions about coverage, so I'm going to have to make a choice. I'll decide it as we go forward, if I'm even asked to continue. But my point is, a government official can't do this. This needs to be a committee that is in charge of the people being paid. You can't, you can't be the boss. Number three here, approve the monthly, monthly primary and secondary broadcast content schedule. We talked, we touched on this a little bit, but it's the primary schedule herein defined as meetings of the primary governmental entities of the town of Fairfield, the representative town meeting, the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Town Plan and Zoning Committee, Zoning Commission. Secondary schedule herein defined as town government or public schools affiliated events, such as graduations, graduation ceremonies, graduation ceremonies, parades, and appropriate nonpartisan informational programming originated by the Fair TV Broadcast System, how a government entity works, sessions, sessions of various committees we wouldn't normally be able to cover, maybe we had some extra dollars, coverage of debates, lectures, and other town-sponsored cultural programming. Approve any, number four is, approve any specially required programming, either via special meeting or proxy vote in the case of an emergency. So for example, when we have a hurricane threat, and the First Selectman, excuse me, the First Selectman wants to do a program with our lead officials on what you should do to be prepared, absolutely, we should do that, but the First Selectman doesn't pick up the phone or the email and call the system manager and say, "I would like that," because that has to be done through the committee. It's not that cumbersome, an email suffices, but the committee has to decide this. Why? Because the committee has to budget the funds, the committee has to ask for the grants, and we are the bulwark, we're sort of the agent for the people who do this videography. I cannot tell you how many times, we all said we love Jerry Spino, how many times people have come up to him, when he is at a Board of Finance, all sorts of different meetings, Board of Selectmen, RTM, and he says he has no problem with it, but you know what, they ask, "Can you cover this? Can you cover this? Can you cover this?" We can't have that. We can't have that. A committee has to choose that. Mr. Spino, or whoever remains the Broadcast System Manager, has to be independent, he has to take his marching orders from the independent committee, and that's why that's so central. That does not mean that we can't do an awesome job of educating our community about what this government does, and how folks should, you know, take advisement on a whole host of issues. There's a great program now running about what to do about, if a coyote comes in your backyard, it's terrific, and, you know, that, that kind of thing is, is worth, yeah, it's terrific, it's great stuff. But my point is just that, if anyone can tell our videographers they'd like something, they have to worry, "Will I get paid? What will happen? Should I say no?" That's not their job. When they're there, they have one mission, they need to say, "Hey, call the commission, email the commission," and that's the appropriate way to do that. And that goes for the average citizen, that goes for the public official. Okay. We're going to, you know, number five, annually prepare grant requests to fund station operations with the assistance of the Fair TV Broadcast System Manager, and provide after-award reporting. We've done this for four years as the operational committee, certainly the bright people that you can appoint can do that same work, especially with Jerry guiding them on what they should ask for in the future. Annually, excuse me, set an annual budget. This is something that the First Selectman and Mr. Becker and the RTM has, you know, pushed us on, you know, have an annual budget. Why is our budget fairly simple? Because we don't have a lot of things other than labor now to pay for, then we relied essentially on whatever we were given. We went into each year waiting to see what CIC II, through its grant process, approved by the state, would allow us to have. But now, we have town dollars, we need to be able to kind of be able to budget that, I think we will be able to, or the future committee will. Approve any minor operational expenditures or requests incurred by the Fair TV Broadcast System Manager, video producers or interns on a monthly basis. This is just when we need batteries, then the battery pack runs out, or we need table breaks. You know, what happened was, is Jerry Spino or some of our other college kids essentially vote stuff out of their own pocket, they pay for these things, and I, as the chairman, paid for it, but, you know, let's have a committee and make sure that every dollar is absolutely carefully watched, and they, they should do that. So even the smallest expense should be appropriately reviewed before it's paid. Encourage volunteer support system of system operations, including but not exclusive to the creation of individual civic, recreational, organizational-based, and school-based Fair TV committees, meant to develop coverage, greater coverage of such town entities by Fair TV, and help broaden its coverage within the scope of its mandate. This is a really wordy way of saying, "It'd be great if somebody on the Little Leagues could, would give us a heads up when they've got something great to cover," like, you know, they would email us, if somebody was responsible for, "Hey, who's going to call Fair TV when we have the parade? Who's going to be responsible for Fair TV when we make it to the playoffs?" Because if we have extra dollars, that's a secondary schedule thing we ought to cover. Schools might want to develop their own committee, they'd like to see their talent show on the air, they might want to see some presentation they do. It's up to them to do it. I used to joke, Mr. First Selectman, that I was going to put my own children's school on the air constantly, 24/7 on the E-Channel, to get the people watching saying, "Why is Stratfield School always on Fair TV?" Just to aggravate them, to get people involved. I hope this more reasonable approach, getting the committee to encourage folks to do this, will get us more terrific programming free of charge, again, a value-engineered approach to getting that. Number nine, update the policies and procedures, that's kind of your opening thing, of Fair TV, the Fair TV Broadcast System, and the circumstances, as time and circumstances dictate, to ensure efficient broadcast operations, as time and circumstances dictate, that's an old TPZ term, as the First Selectman's aware. Again, you know, that's, that's kind of the, we have policies and procedures in place, I know you talked about having a committee rewrite policies and procedures, they're there. Will there be changes as things change over time? You know, could public access go away? Sure, but right now, we've reserved Fair TV online addresses for live broadcast streaming, and if we had to convert tomorrow to recorded and live on the Internet, Fair TV would go on existing. I wouldn't like it, please, I would prefer to have the support of Cable Vision, U-verse, et cetera, but, you know, we'll go forward with that. Finally, standards of conduct. Members of the Fair TV Commission shall be subject to the standards of conduct as described in Article 11, Sections 1 to 4, and subject to the penalties and disciplinary actions for violations as set forth in Section 5. Don't want to make it a charterable commission for now, or you want to hold off and we've got to work out the process, cool, but if you're going to have an ordinance that's going to do this, I've been through too much here. A little committee, look, the reason why public access sucks for so, sucked for so long, and I hate to use that term in a governmental meeting like this, but to put it bluntly, was because it was poorly followed, poorly understood, and a lot of folks who, who thought they might make a buck off it didn't even realize it until they got on these committees and things like this, and that, there's no money there. The money's a pittance. I mean, $600,000, $700,000 divided by seven towns, where's the profit in that? There's not a lot. You know, that's, that's the thing, but still, even with those petty dollars, we had things go on in these committees, and there was no due process. No one could do anything about this. So I urge you, that whatever approach you take, that you make sure that these standards of conduct absolutely apply to the Fair TV Commission. So I appreciate your patience, I hope you will take this document as the rules, as a skeleton for the rules of the road. I urge you, if you are supportive of the SoundView Community Media's work in public access, to laud them for it, but I can assure you, finally, that Fair TV is doing the job, a job that inspires, again and again, our, the agencies we succeed, we succeeded, to come back. It inspires huge corporate entities to come and say, "Please give us Fair TV." There's no competition here. There's no need for a committee to go off that you pick and rewrite the rules, maybe somehow incorporate 1,000 flowers, woman here. No, we've been down that road for 25 years. I just spent the last four and a half years on a weekly constructed, not laying out what meetings you have to cover, not laying out what happens when you try to get paid by the company that, that we've replaced, committee. Uh-uh. There are policies and procedures in place that can be presented to you, they are on file with the Cable Advisory Council of Area Two, we had to have them in order to get a grant in the first place. We may have to update them down the line, but you see those policies and procedures. They are, your meetings are on the air, and that the most recent meetings go first, and the live meetings go ahead of those. I, in the four and a half years I have been involved, and in the last three and a half as chairman, former chairman now, I guess, I have yet to receive in our email, or in the, in the town newspapers, a complaint about whether or not somehow an issue, an entity was treated unfairly by the coverage of Fair TV. And that was with us, with a very low amount of money to spend, the, this is our best year in terms of coverage dollars. So I leave it up to you. I look forward to this conversation continuing, I urge you to look this over and think long and hard. I would say to you that if you have, I would live with an ordinance, but I would tell you long-term, if I were a member of the town of Fairfield, if I was a voter, I would think that if the town charter could be accommodated, and it may be a process that takes a year, but if the town charter can be amended so that we have a Golf Commission, and that's no knock on Golf, we, and we should certainly have a place in the town charter for the Fair TV Commission. Locked in, clear, no ambiguity, and I hope you will come to share that view as we go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Cannelli, thank you, and it's obvious from your passion why Fair TV did, as well as it has progressed, it is fascinating. Any thoughts, comments from the board?
Just very briefly for me, and Mr. Cannelli, thank you for the information, for the background, for all your hard work, and all your passion. Greatly appreciated. For me, at this point, I've, I think I've learned a lot, and I think it's best for me to take a step back and absorb some of the, some of the information, and revisit this soon.
All right. Just for purposes of discussion, you know, and again, based on some of the points that Mr. Cannelli raised, this is going to take kind of a lot of work and input, is this something that this board should undertake? Should we ask the RTM if they want to get involved? Are you guys up for taking a look at this?
Well, here...
Go ahead.
My thought is this, I do, I think there's been an information download here, and I think that we, I actually think we should have an initial conversation here, absolutely, and take this, and again, you know, as Mr. Cannelli was talking, I was making notes, and there are things that I'd like to explore, and I do, I think we should take this up, again, as a body, and talk about some of these specific issues, and there, there are certainly broader framework issues that impact things beyond Fair TV, clearly, but specific to this charge, and to moving forward into a committee that's not an operational, but it's an ongoing success or agency, I think we should come back to this and, and then see from there.
Given the time spent, okay if we take some public comment? I know we normally don't do that, but...
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Any comments from the public?
I know, I just talked to, Jerry Spino made a point, he asked me to...
If you can...
Two seconds. I would just say, Mr. Spino reminded me that, in fact, that while AT&amp;T was excited and energized about our work, and they did go to the community, they were contacted and energized about our work, and they did go to the community, they were contacted by him originally. He reached out to them to let them know, because they didn't know who he was, as the, as the executive producer and system manager. He has a very important understand, he wants to make sure, you know, that everyone understands that, and I appreciate him clarifying that point, and I just want to get that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Cannelli. Any other comment from the public? All right, back to the board.
I just would like to add the word tenacity to the efforts of Mr. Cannelli as well, so.
No question. There's probably a long list of objectives that can be applied to Mr. Cannelli in that regard. Is there a motion? Or do you want to continue discussion?
I think I'm good for now. I think Kristen's idea of coming back to this board first and maybe revisiting and refining this and discussing it, and then deciding if we need to expand the scope or the group of people who are looking at it, makes a lot of sense, and I think that's a great idea. With one caveat, as long as, without getting in the weeds, as long as in the interim, whether it's two weeks or two months or whatever the timeframe is, the ongoing, Fair TV is properly funded so that we can continue operations. And I know you've been working on that.
Yeah, just, so, everybody's updated. What we've done is basically come up with a Band-Aid, where we've signed an agreement with Mr. Smien to pay him on a month-to-month basis, kind of assuming that the committee would be set up at some point, and would, as Mr. Cannelli suggested, be the person responsible for identifying the station manager and that, but in order to keep things rolling in the interim, we are, we are doing that, purely as a Band-Aid, not certainly as an ongoing process, but.
May I make a suggestion, just similar to our nonprofit committee that we're going to be talking about next? Could we, as members, submit our, any commentary and thoughts to you as the chair for, just your consolidating and disseminating as backup for our next meeting? In other words, for example, if Selectman Kylie and I on our own had some thoughts about this, we could submit it to your office. You can put that together for us, and then it can be a document that we're able to review prior to coming to the next meeting in the hopes that we can move the comments and the discussion along. Does that work?
Sure.
All right. That works. One other thought for consideration, and I don't know if we have to unnecessarily define it now, but given the magnitude of this, and given the number of considerations, should we, in fact, just have a, at some point, a special meeting dealing with just this one item on the agenda? We'll have plenty of time to talk, so we don't kind of hold up the other items on the board.
That's probably a good idea. And the last thing on this before I forget is, is for Jim. Jim, can you shoot us a soft copy of this document so that we can play with it?
Absolutely. I'll include some links to various entities like CAC 2 and things like that that will hopefully help you with the operations. I would just ask, I hope that, you know, activists who are concerned about this, this issue, myself included, can send help and continue to be part of the conversation as you develop.
Yeah, and I think that would be the thought on, on kind of a special meeting where it would be focused, it would just this, that nobody would have to sit through other agenda items.
That's fair.
To get to this topic.
Yeah.
So just consider that, consider that in our discussion.
Absolutely.
Maybe in the evening.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to postpone?
How does that work, then, if we're going to postpone our next?
I think the, we can postpone it to our next scheduled meeting on September 5th, based on what comes back, if we have enough opportunity for that, and if you let me know whether a special meeting might make sense. We can then identify a time and date, publicly notice that meeting.
Sure.
Just have that, and then we wouldn't have to spend time on the 5th discussing about if we have another time. This gives us time, the postponement motion would just give us a hook to make sure that we address it by September 5th.
Fair enough. Therefore, I'm sorry.
September 5th is not our next scheduled meeting.
Oh.
We have a meeting scheduled for?
Okay.
Well, we don't have to.
We can still make it that meeting.
We can still postpone it to that meeting.
You good with that, September 5th? Is that a bad date for you?
No.
No?
No.
Is it too late, too soon?
Well, I, I mean, if, I prefer, if we, if this meeting in, if the meeting in August is occurring, that we at least have it on the agenda, if there then is a move on your part to come up with coordinating a special meeting. That way, in other words, my preference would be to keep this moving sooner rather than later.
And that the thought would be, given that the 15th is going to be a difficult date, both because of my vacation schedule and Mr. Cannelli's vacation schedule, if we're going to do any interim work, if we're not here, that makes it harder to do.
Okay.
Postponing to it, if it's appropriate to have a special meeting in August, we can certainly decide that, and I think one of the issues there is that somebody else is taking a vacation later in August. It complicates the meeting schedule in that end. So that was the only reason for thinking of the 5th and doing that, but if there's, if, if you're amenable, we can have Jen look for a late August date that works for the three of us. Put this as a special meeting, a special item, and look at that.
We could do that. We could, if you're not comfortable postponing it to a certain date, we could just take no action on it and revisit that offline for when the next meeting might be. I mean.
Whatever works from a procedural standpoint. It's fine.
I think we postpone it to the 5th. We can always do a special meeting.
Okay.
We don't need a motion to do that. We postpone it to the 5th, that makes sure that we address it. We have Jen take a look in late August and see if the three of us can get together at some point, so we can properly notice a special meeting, and that way, and we do it in the evening, so that makes it easier for folks to attend.
Okay. Fair enough.
How about if we were, the motion is such, that we postpone this item to the next scheduled, to the next Board of Selectmen meeting? I mean, do we have to, I, I don't know if we have to provide, if, I'm concerned if we provide the 5th.
I think when you postpone, you're supposed to have a date certain, I believe.
So if we provide the 5th, we really shouldn't have it prior to that, because we're then postponing it to that date? Do we then just go?
Now, the special meeting, that's this to.
Prior to.
The special meeting could supersede that, is what you're saying.
Resolution. I'm saying the special meeting could be a workshop to kind of work through the agenda and preparation.
Or that, okay.
Okay. Great.
So that said, I move to postpone this item to our September 5th meeting.
I'll second.
Fine. Any further discussion on that?
Please.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right, next up, to review and discuss the not-for-profit committee charter.
Is there a presenter for this, or no?
No, well.
She's pointing fingers.
Selectman McCarthy-Veyhe is on this committee, so I think we have.
We're going to do it for you.
We can get the inside scoop.
Fair enough.
I think at the last meeting, I said that we had asked that the First Selectman speak with the Chair of the Board of Finance and the Chair of the Committee. I believe that's, that that is, has occurred, and that the Committee has voted on this charter, or charge, which is the language that you often use, is continuing to do this work. I think the only kind of comfort, or conversation that I've heard about it is really grammatical. I think that people on the Committee understand, if you all understand and agree with this, which, and I think that, you know, I see the Chair of the Board of Finance here, I think that this is moving forward, and it's, it's more of a, a technical thing to do, so.
I only had one comment on it, and I was on the Board of Finance when we initially created this committee that's now a Board of Selectmen committee. My only comment is this, when we first talked about this, there were two, two issues that I thought were important. And number one really was, you know, understanding the process for getting a not-for-profit onto the town's or into the town's budget. And it makes sense to look at that because it had not been done consistently over the years, and nobody could define what that process was. So I think that's a great idea. And I think, I think item number three is, is also fair about how we're going to review it as part of the budget process, and how we look at it, and how much time we spend on it, and do we do it during the budget process or slightly outside the budget process? I think that's all good stuff. I'm a little less comfortable with number two, and maybe I'm just not reading it or understanding it properly, but if I'm reading number two correctly, this small group of people is being charged with the question, do we even do this? I mean, does the town invest money in, in nonprofits in the big picture? And I wasn't sure that that was part of the original scope as I understood it. And obviously, whatever they recommend is not binding, so they're not making, quote, "a final decision" that hasn't gone through town bodies, but I was just a little, a little uneasy with, you know, something that important, a decision of that magnitude, in the hands of not ju, not this committee, but any, you know, committee that was a subcommittee of a board. So maybe you can just get me comfortable that it's not quite as black and white as I'm reading it.
No, I would love to respond to that. I mean, I think the language is pretty black and white, so it's fair that you have that question. Part of what had come up and what I heard, sitting in the audience at the Board of Finance meetings, was, should we determine a set amount of money? Should there be an amount that, that any given body or group might recommend should be what we provide?
Mm-hmm.
A percentage of the budget, X dollars? So in talking about the charter, we talked a little bit about that, and we kind of went back to the idea of, yes, you know, should, in fact.
We even do this?
Do this as a town? In other words, why do we do this as a town? And I can just, I don't want to, I mean, I can answer anything you want, I certainly don't want to upstage the Committee, but one of the conversations that happened at this table at the last meeting was essentially about the idea of we, as a town, suggesting these are our needs, how can you, as a nonprofit, help us fulfill our needs and our strategic objectives? As opposed to a nonprofit coming to us saying, here are our objectives, how can you, as a town, help us fulfill those? And I think number two addresses that, and it is pretty black and white in the language, and some had suggested that that actually be number one in the, in the goals.
Well, that, that would concern me even more.
Well, but we, but what happened is, one of the Committee members basically said they weren't comfortable with the idea of the town funding as we have been, or through, using the process that we have been. Thus, if there is a method of going through this process that would allow them to be more comfortable and provide some kind of logic, such as what we discussed at the last meeting, that then they're more likely to recommend. So I, I'm probably not making you feel that much more comfortable, because frankly, there, I, I'm not one of them. I, I think that, that language, it is pretty black and white, but I will say this, this Committee is very clear that it's a recommending body, and no matter what we recommend as a Committee, that in essence, in our town, the First Selectmen begins the budget process with the department heads, and those numbers are put before all of us as elected town bodies, and that no matter what process gets recommended, that each body has the opportunity to accept or reject whether or not any given agency or amount of funds are accepted. So I, I think it's a fair, it's a fair concern.
Okay.
But again, I, it's a recommendation.
Right.
I, I will say to, one other thing, given the conversation so far, and again, this is my personal opinion, not the Committee, that I don't, I don't anticipate that there will be, well, you know what, never mind, I'm just not going to speak to number two, because we haven't gotten to that conversation. We're still really on number one and really looking, we're actually, I think, perhaps Mr. DeWitt and myself are actually going to go and meet with at least one other, hopefully two other towns to talk about their process.
Right.
That seems to be something that we should at least examine.
Good, thank you. And just lastly on that, I wouldn't expect you to be able to speak for a Committee's work that has not been finished, so thank you.
Exactly.
And I certainly appreciate that. And I'm not suggesting that there are members of this Committee who might be predisposed to just not doing this, but I just wanted to make sure that the, that my reading of this wasn't indicating that to me. And it sounds to me that you're comfortable that it's not, and that's going to be more part of the process-oriented discussion versus the, we're not going to do this, let's go home.
Right, exactly. And that, that's, I think you really put that well, that essentially, in feedback that many of us had gotten as members of this Committee, why does the town spend taxpayer dollars? Who, who are you, as a town, to decide X, Y, or Z? And how are you deciding this? Those were the kinds of questions that some of the members were getting, and we realized that it was actually worth just that philosophical kind of conversation.
Okay. Well, with that off my chest, I'm good. Thank you.
And I trust you can take those questions and concerns back to the Committee?
Absolutely.
All right. Next up. May I have a motion to accept the tax collector refunds?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. To hear, consider and act upon any communications. I've got one that I wanted to relay it out, and I don't see that this was copied in the packets, so I apologize for that.
It might be in the one that's, that was dropped on our table.
No.
Oh, we weren't going to have it.
I'm sorry, that the email from Cindy?
Yes. Well, I just got this tonight.
I did see some.
Jen, I don't think I have that.
Yeah, you have a copy.
I didn't read that, I know.
Ah, okay, yes.
Does this correlate?
Yep.
Okay.
Same thing. Basically, what we have is, is a series of small balances in the range of, you know, one cent to a couple dollars, that total to approximately $7,500. It's been our past practice to write this amount off.
Okay.
But it's going back, looking, if there wasn't a clear direction in all cases or authority to do that, so I wanted to bring this to the board.
Hmm, okay.
Just let you know that we're going to proceed with this for this year, but at some point, come back to the RTM and ask for clarity and ordinance to kind of make our past practice more a formal part of our process. All right, next up, that's it on communications to the board. To hear, consider and act upon any other business that shall properly come before the board. I don't have any. Mr. Cowley, you mentioned you might have.
I have a couple, if you don't mind, please. And the first is a question, do we have, is there an update on Osborne Hill School that we can talk about?
Not that is more current than what the memo that was sent out over the weekend.
Okay, all right. I just didn't know if there was any results that came back today, or if there was anybody here that could address it, but I don't see anyone.
Not, not that I have, but not that I've been notified of.
Okay. I guess my only comment there is, you know, and you can speak to this better than I can, but, you know, as far as, you know, my personal support or our support for the Osborne community, you know, it's a very difficult situation that they're going through now. School starts in three, four weeks. There's a lot of uncertainty, and there's, and there's a lot of angst and concern by the families and the, and the children, and, you know, the people that have to work in that building. So, you know, I just wanted to personally express my support for the process and getting it fixed, and helping them in any way and every way we can, no matter what that is, because I don't know what that is today, and hopefully confirm that, you know, we have our best and brightest people working on this, and they're going a mile a minute to make sure that a solution is found and implemented and funded, and, you know, that school is made safe as soon as humanly possible.
Now, I think we all agree with your feelings on that, and I think that, I do thank the Superintendent for reaching out last week, identifying that there were issues there, even though they didn't have the full scope, impact, or kind of the action plan totally laid out. I applaud them for going out to the Osborne Hill community and letting them know, and also, to your point, also reaching out to the state and federal EPA to bring them down here, and I believe that there's a meeting scheduled with them.
Is it the 13th?
The week of the 13th.
I think.
Not a specific date yet, but the week of the 13th.
Okay, a week off.
And I think that's going to be a very important milestone, where we can share information, get a lot more informed about what the impact is, what it might be, and also what the action plans are going forward.
Yeah, all right.
Yep, no, I clearly share the concern, and I also express my confidence in the Osborne Hill community. They're a very strong community, and I know that they will work really well and hard with, with the town and the Board of Education, so I am also eager to get actual, more specific information, and I know that we will get that as soon as possible. I, I'm more of the, how about five miles a minute?
There you go. Well, I just think it's important for, you know, for everyone that's affected to know that it's important to us and that we're engaged and we're going to help.
Okay.
I do have a second item, and I have a couple notes on the second item to help me through it. Can you, Mr. Selectman, can you please provide us with an update, since we haven't had a meeting in a few weeks? Can you provide us with an update on the status of the town CFO?
Yes, I think that was covered in a press release that went out today.
It was.
I believe you were copied on that.
It was. I do have that.
All right. And I think that basically states an update as we have it for the moment.
Okay, so you don't have any other comments to make besides the press release? Is that what you're saying?
Not at this time.
Okay. I just have a couple other follow-up questions on that, then, if you don't mind, okay? As, as part of the, the explanation in the press release today, it would indicate that something's taken place, and my question is, has there been any, has there been any something's taken place, and my question is, has there been any, has there been any document that's been signed by the town that memorializes what the press release described today?
Yes, there has.
There has been, okay. And so there has been a signed document that documents the resignation, and I'm assuming it also was going to address any change to job duties or status of the responsibilities of the current CFO?
Correct.
Okay, good, okay. And it was signed yesterday, or recently, today? Yes, okay. Does this particular document bind the town financially in any way?
Yes.
It does, okay. All right. Is it your plan to share that document with the Board of Selectmen?
Most definitely.
Most definitely. Do you have a timeframe for when you're going to share that document with the Board of Selectmen?
Plan was to send that out tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, okay. Are there any other peripheral documents that pertain to the situation that would be relevant, that are important, that kind of complete the documentation package that we should see?
I believe it's all in that one packet.
You believe it's all in the one package, it's all contained within one document?
Okay.
That's good news, and I thank you for that. So what I'm understanding is that we're going to be able to have full access, as a Board of Selectmen, to any memorandums of understanding, binding agreements, employment contracts, changes of duties, things that would be pertinent or important components of that type of document.
Correct.
And we'll have that.
Okay, good.
And I thank you very much for that. My other question is, is very simply, it is my understanding that, I don't know what year it took place, but there was an internal Town of Fairfield document that kind of memorializes the terms and conditions of department heads, and how those employment situations and relationships are handled. Are you familiar with that document?
If you're referring to, it was an internal memorandum prepared by Mr. Flado, that is loosely termed the department head benefits sheet?
I believe that's the document. Now, to my knowledge, that document, it predates you, so that's understandable, but that document's never been circulated among town bodies or reviewed, and I don't know what the necessary review might be, but can we please get a copy of that document as well?
That is also part of that packet.
It is part of that same packet, yes. Fantastic. Well, that's, that's good news. Well, you have answered my questions, because what I'm concerned about is, you know, the peripheral impact, not just, you know, to the operations of the town, and operations of the town hall, but the financial impact of any agreement, which I haven't seen, so I can't, I can't opine on that. But I do thank you for that. I know it's been a difficult 15 days, you know, there's been a lot of questions and concerns about, what do we know, when are we going to find out? And I think a good number of people have been asking striking questions, and I think other people have been a bit more patient and understanding, trying to allow the process to work through, and I would put myself in that category. But we are at a point where there's an agreement, a settlement, and I believe in the spirit of open and transparent and good government, I think the conveyance of all those documents to us is an important part of that, and I look forward to it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that being the end of any comments, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.